Today's date is Monday, August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is a City of Ramblin City Council Special Meeting Study Session, and the purpose of this meeting is to discuss council vacancy procedure and policy. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Barden.
Here.
Councilman Kraut.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
And Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a call.
Please.
Tonight's special meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, roll call. Number two, agenda. Number three, the discussion, the council vacancy procedure and policy. Number four is public comment, and number five is adjournment, and most would be in order to accept tonight's special meeting study session.
So we'll accept the agenda for the special study session.
Support.
There's been motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Mr. Jones, to accept the study session agenda as submitted. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair, both yes, most approved.
Thank you, council. We're now at discussion, and our city attorney had sent an email with a letter, submitted a letter, opinion letter regarding the filing, filling council vacancies. So I don't know who wants to lead off with this. You, Mr. Chair, or our city attorney at this time?
Well, I'd like the city attorney to lead off the procedure of how we will go about the idea of filling the vacancy.
Sure. As I said in the memo, I reminded you again, I gave you the paragraph in the charter that basically says that the council fills the vacancy by a majority vote in forty-five days, but other than that, there's no rules of the charter. How you go about picking a person, a person to fill any vacancy? Right now, there's no ordinance on that either, so you would be doing it based on a resolution which could be different each time there was a vacancy, or if you wanted to, you could adopt an ordinance, saying forth the procedure for filling vacancies, which would stay in place then, and once it's an ordinance, it would require five votes in the future if you ever wanted to amend it or repeal it, like any other ordinance does. So those are your, kind of your two choices as to procedurally how to set it up. And then I just went forward and gave you three different examples, some of which we've already talked about the last time you wanted, you had to fill the vacancy. You know, one is to, number one possibility here is you could pick the last highest vote getter, last election that didn't get elected. And I suggested there was also that you could put a vote gap limit on that if you wanted to. I just used the number of hundred votes, so that that next person would have to be within a hundred votes of the, of the last person that did get selected from that election, so that you at least had some confidence that there was citizens in the community that thought that particular candidate would be a good candidate for the position. Also, you don't, again, you're not required to do that. Second one I listed was an application process, which you would, since we talked about that last time, having information in an application, and you would choose some way from the application as to who you wanted to pick. The third one is to do a posting of a letter of interest. All they have to do is give you letter backs or emails saying that they are interested in the position, and they would have to provide an iChat. Everybody needs to be iChatted that wants to have a position. And then from that, you would have developed some questions, and my suggestion was, you take, you take the list, the people who had an interest, all of you pick one person. If you all picked a different person, you'd have six people to interview, but you could have less than six if some of you picked the same person off that list. And then you interview those candidates. You would have some kind of scoring chart. I did an example of a possible scoring chart, and just listed some, of course, some subject matters for the questions in it. Again, those, you can have any questions you want, but this is just to give you an example of what the chart would look like, and you would fill in your, on each one of these questions, whatever the questions were. Each council person would vote that from zero to five, based on how well you thought they answered that question, and whoever got the highest number, score on the chart at the end would be the person you would appoint to the vacancy. So those are just some alternatives we can discuss, or you can throw them all out and go over something else.
Bill, you have something?
If I can, and I'm, just how I feel about it. You know, we went through a very difficult time here in January for everybody up here. In fact, I had two of my closest friends that helped me get elected, and I was, you know, stuck with it to pick one of them. But I think it should be the next person up. I think we should put it in the form of a ordinance where it takes, where it takes five votes. The only thing, unless it's less than forty-five days till the next election, then maybe we, you know, we wouldn't have to go through all this, but that's all I feel about it. Because, I mean, we're on, we got called names, phone calls and everything else, and I didn't care for it. It let the bitter taste in my mouth. That's all I feel.
Ms. Tally?
So, at the last meeting we had regarding this, when we was filling the vacancy, I think the mayor brought up the scoring system as well. And so, at our last meeting, we all had this in our packet. I thought Ellen did a great job in the committee for the street signing. This is like the template right here. It's right there in our face, just waiting for us to plug in whatever information we want to see for a scoring system. It came up at the last meeting, the scoring system. I think some people spoke in public comment about the scoring system, and to me, we got the template right here. It's in our package from the last meeting. Easy peasy. That's just my opinion.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I agree with Wadsworth. I think it should be the next in line. I went through and wrote down all of our, the votes we got. If anybody wants the numbers, I can read them out. And I don't want to restrict it within a hundred, because none of us would be on council then, because Barden had kicked our butts, you know? Barden had two thousand five hundred thirty. The next person even close to John Barden was Virginia. So I don't want to put a hundred out, a hundred point, you know? These people are, that ran for the election, campaigned, went out there, and I think it just really, it's, it's the democratic process. Instead of our being influenced perhaps by somewhat, I put in a position like Bill said, when you have friends that are running, we just go with the next in line. And there's no reflection on you, please don't feel that way. It's very, what happened, I mean, how rare is it that you had three vacancies? That would probably never happen again, and let's pray to God.
And hope it don't.
Let's pray. But I just think without all the turmoil and everything, the next in line would be good. And I have the percentages here and everything, if anybody wants these figures. I just copied it all down and went online and looked.
Mr. Jones?
Now, okay, we, we know there's something went wrong back. What my question is exactly, okay, with the process that you used, what went wrong? Where was a mistake made? You know, because in order to come up with a good system, you have to know where, what went wrong to change the system. So when we figure out what went wrong, now we can figure out, help come up with a solution. But what, in the process that was used, we know the first process, you went by the next votes, second process, you went by the next votes, next next process, you came, the council voted. And you said, it takes four to win and two to move on. After the first vote, no one had four, no one had three. I had two, and everybody else had one. According to the rules you set in the beginning, you said at least two votes to move on. So everybody had one vote, couldn't move on anyway. Now, was a mistake made by continuing on and not acknowledging the rules that you set in the beginning? Because the rules got changed after that first vote. So that was a mistake. We, first we acknowledged the mistake we made, then we could figure out, okay, a better system. Because you never could correct anything until you realize what went wrong, then you acknowledge, and now we can move on. Now, a number system, I, I kind of like that, you know? But we have to figure out the questions we want to ask, but once we figure out exactly what we did wrong, now we can move on. You know, not saying that that system was the good system, even though I benefited from it, but I'm not saying that was the way to go, but first we got to acknowledge what we, the mistakes that was made that night, and now we can move on.
Any other comments from council?
I believe next, they're not really, they ran for office.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, council, you should have ran. I'll start looking at it.
Any other comments from council? Ms. Roscoe?
Well, I agree with David on the fact that our system that we had in place didn't get followed like we thought it should. Somewhere along the way, the communication, we lost the communication as to exactly how it was supposed to go to the second step. And, but being that said, I also, if we're going to go with the next person, I, I agree with Steve where he says it should be within a certain number of votes. I mean, and he doesn't mean from like the top vote getter, he means from number seven. So if number seven has five hundred votes, and then the next person underneath them only got four votes, you know, number eight or something, and I'm just over-exaggerating that. But, you know, then we can look at doing the interview process and whatever. But if we're going to do an interview process, I think we should do it like Tina said, follow a scoring system, and at the end of the day, honor the scoring system. And unfortunately, just like Bill said, he had friends out there. We all had friends out there, you know? And, and that makes it very difficult, you know? But on the other hand, it's, it's, at the end of the day, it's not the buddy system. I'm sorry. Put it that way. You know, we got to try to look at the best person qualified for the, for that position and go forward with it, as much as it hurts us sometimes to have to either vote against. I mean, it's the same thing with, you know, when we're all sitting up here on council, and we all have different opinions, you know, and we're friends and different things, and you hate to vote against each other, but on the other hand, you have to vote how you feel and how you perceive something at the end of the day. So there's a couple of different ways we can go, however, everybody decides to do it. But if, if we go with the next person in line, I totally agree with Steve that we need to come up with some kind of criteria as to the percentage of the votes that they got from the residents.
Through the chair?
Yes, Ms. Abdo.
I'll agree with the percentage, because as I'm looking at these figures here, the next in line, we put Al Wilson, and he was five hundred votes behind you, John. But if you look at the percentages, it's different of what they get.
And what I mean is, is, you're talking about, you're talking about the number of votes after the seventh person. You don't go from the top down. It's like, okay, who was number eight? And what was the gap between number seven and number eight? That's where you would want to look at the numbers gap.
That was four hundred votes between seven and eight. Close to four hundred, three hundred and something.
So, and I think that is going to still get very complicated.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I just want to say, I think we limit ourselves when we do the next highest vote getter. We're limiting ourselves. There's a pool of people out there, people that want to get involved, who want to serve on the city council, and just want a chance to try to get appointment in a case of a vacancy. I think we are limiting ourselves when we close the door on trying to open it up to other people that want to put their hands in the ring, that might give us candidates who might want to run, that might want to just run for city council. Giving it to the next person, I think that just makes it easy for us, move it on, and then that's it. We limit ourselves. We need to open it up to people. We got talent out here in our city of Ramblins, and we need to open it up to a pool of people, and you, we don't know who we might get. So I just want to put that out there. We just limit ourselves.
Any other comment?
Yes.
I'm not important, but I am going to just suggest a couple things. So we have to keep in mind, it's a four-year process. People move in, people move out.
Agreed.
So that changes things. There's write-ins. It could happen, we didn't think there would be three vacancies, but what if there's eight people that run, and there's two vacancies, and there's a write-in? So what do you do on that write-in gets elected because they're next on the list? And I don't know, Steve mentioned about if you choose to go down that list, and then all of a sudden, you say, okay, we're not going to go down that list anymore because the percentages were way off, is that potentially a lawsuit or discrimination or a, like, especially depending on who that person is? I mean, what if it's somebody that isn't favorable or has some kind of issue or medical, you know? I don't know, anything can happen. So I don't know if you start off that, going down that list and appointing somebody because they're next on the list, then you go, okay, but we're not appointing you because you had so many votes less. I don't, I don't know. I just don't want to end up in a lawsuit.
I don't, yeah, I don't think you should come up with a reason to skip somebody on the list.
Not skip. Just say somebody's the next on the list, and let's say that their votes were pretty low, but they are next on the list, but we've been following that format all along, kind of like with these three examples. You went, you picked from the list, you picked from the list, then you didn't pick from the list, and you're saying...
I, I don't think if you change the procedure now, that there's, that's going to be a problem. You, you've basically just used it, two different versions of it, I guess, the last time around too, so.
Right, but if you're putting a policy in place, as Celeste was mentioning, the difference in votes. So let's say somebody from the last, the seventh person that's sitting on council, let's say there's some openings, and let's say there's less than a hundred. Then you get to another vacancy, and let's say there's a difference of four hundred votes. Does that person not get appointed because they didn't get enough votes, even though they're next on the list? Does that make sense?
Well, I guess if you said the number that they didn't match, yes, you wouldn't use that then.
And there would be no reason for any kind of a lawsuit based on that?
Somebody can always sue, I guess, but I don't think there's much merit to it. I mean, it does, it does raise the issue that what are you going to do with that? Now you got to have an alternate process too, right? Because...
I mean, else you go with it or you don't. I mean, I, I don't know. And, you know, you get new people that move in during that four-year period that might be interested in running, so, you know, I don't know, just some things to think about. And then the last thing, the only thing that, one thing that really bothered me is when, when people came in to run, unless somebody can explain it to me, no background checks? What is that? What if you're sitting next to somebody that...
Well, that's why one of, I suggested the iChat, use the iChat, but, but actually, candidates during the normal election don't have to go through a criminal background check at all, so they, they could be running for office and have criminal convictions on your record, so unless some other citizen does some due diligence and who's running against them and digs that up and makes it public...
That's amazing.
You wouldn't...
Especially in today's world.
But I was suggesting, and I was suggesting that you ought to have an iChat when you're picking, because you don't want the publicant standing out here saying, you guys didn't do, act, when you, you did this, you picked somebody with a criminal conviction, you know?
And that, and that's my concern. I mean, I, you know, even for treasure, it blows my mind, how do you know I didn't rob a bank and get away with it? Sir, you know, it's just, it's weird to me. I don't know. But just a thought.
Ms. Bragg?
Thank you. I said I wasn't going to say anything, but I, I'm compelled to say something here. First is that when you're going by the next candidate, if you're elected, you're elected. Just because you received votes, you became, you were the eighth, the ninth, or the tenth, you were not elected. You just, that was just the number of votes that you received. That's number one, okay? Number two, I really think that if a person is interested, let's say maybe number eight, now who knew number eight, what had other political, had on his agenda? Who knew he was going to run for another office? So then, we wasted a lot of, and with all due respect, there was a lot of time wasted in appointing that person who only served for a short period of time, because they were running for, you know, they had plans to run for another office. So then, here we are, you know, back trying to fill another, another vacancy. Another thing we have to keep in mind, just because somebody was on that ballot receipt, that maybe they've moved, their plans have changed. Hamtramck right now is going through, because they have, I think it's two council members, maybe the mayor, they don't even live in Ramblin, in Hamtramck, but they have a business. So I think that if a person wants to serve on this board, my opinion only, from what I've observed, they should apply. And you should go through, you should interview that person, ask those pertinent questions, and then you have a scoring system, so that you know that the person that is going to serve, that they can serve the remainder of the term, they're civic-minded, they're going to be committed to, you know, they have the qualifications. As has already been said, we don't know what's happened, you know, from that time period that they ran. A lot of people, their plans change. Let's just say somebody ran for office, but at that time, that was, that was good, that they wanted to. But then, their plans have changed, and they've moved on to something else. Maybe they don't want to serve on council anymore. Do you automatically just appoint them because they had so many number of votes? That's something to think about. Also, you got to think about, there may be some campaign finance issues that maybe they didn't complete while they were running. So there are a lot of variables, things, there's a lot of things that you have to consider, and I think that whatever decision you make, but I think there has to be a vetting process. People need to apply, so that you know that if they take, if they take the timeout to apply, you know that they are interested. And then you all can do your vetting, however you want to do that. I will, I'm going to go back to what Councilman Jones said about the ballot, you know, because you all said you wanted to vote, and I'm going to, I kind of screwed that up a little bit, because we had, one person had two votes, and everybody had one, 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 one. And we should have just stopped right there, and then, you know, but we were trying to make this fair. It was like, hmm, was that supposed to happen this way? So we wanted to do it again, just to make sure, you know, maybe we should do this again, do another vote, just in case. You know, we were trying to be fair, you know, across the board. So I will take, you know, I probably should have just said, okay, first round, that's it, number two, and we're done. So I will take the hit for that. But I just feel like, you know, you should go through the vetting process. That person should at least apply and show or a letter of interest that they want to be on council. And then you, as the legislative body, will vet that person. And then, as it said, there's a scoring system, you can score them out, and then, you know, whoever that person is. And lastly, whatever you decide, council, I really believe that you should put it in an ordinance format, because that way, from time to time, the ordinance, you can change the ordinance. You know, to change it on the, as far as the charter, you got to, you know, the language, you got to, you know, vote, you got to get approval from the Attorney General. It, it's a huge process. So, but if you, whatever you decide in your policy, you put it in, in the ordinance, then you always have something to fall back on. The process is in the ordinance, so whatever happens down the line, I'm not here, whatever, retired somewhere, you can always go back to the ordinance and say, oh, this is how you do this, this is how we implement this, this is the process we're going to follow. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Well, I still think it should be the next one up. These people that are, that are, that are on the list have already demonstrated that they want to be here. They campaigned, they bought signs. Unfortunately, they didn't get enough votes to win. And, you know, it's, these, you know, these other folks had, all of a sudden showed up and, God, I can get to council now, really easy. I don't got to campaign, I just got, you know, and I think it should be the next person up. I think it takes the politics out of it. It's simple, it's the next one up. And he, that person don't want her, or they left the city, and we go all the way down them, down them list. That's how I feel about it. I mean, like I say, you know, people, well, there's good people out there that may want this. Well, these people on the list have already demonstrated that they want to be here. Like I say, they campaigned, they probably bought signs, you know, and they worked, unfortunately, they didn't get enough votes. I think it'd be, it would make it simple. If, if it's not this way, if we go through this process of interviews and voting, we're going to be back to the same place we were here on January the twenty-ninth, and we couldn't pick one. That's how I feel about it.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, through the, do you think, I just have to respond?
Because, you know, and the only reason that we went through this, because some of us didn't like the next name on the list, that's why we did that.
I'm just asking, so that, so let's just say the next person, I'm just asking a question, that next person on the list, okay, they were the number eight or nine, but shouldn't they at least apply and say, I, I'm the next person on the list? They should show some type of interest, because we automatically, if you automatically appoint them, how do you know they want to serve? So you just automatically appoint that person, at least if the next person on the list...
If they want it, you do it. If they don't want it, you go down, you go...
But how would you know unless you reached out to them? That's all I'm saying. You'd have to at least reach, someone would have to reach out to that individual...
Well, I would think that you would call them on the phone and say, there's a vacancy.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And you're the next one up, the council wants to know, have you wanted?
That would be up to council to vote, yeah. I'm just saying.
You know, we did this one time prior to this, it was when, when Lambert led up the council, Junior Block, in nineteen eighty-nine or seven, he was the next one up. It was very simple procedure, very simple. But go ahead. Ms. Bragg, I've expressed our appeal.
And no disrespect, I, I believe the scoring system would work best. I think it would be fair. We limit ourselves if we just give it to the next person. If we go through a scoring process, maybe we give extra points for somebody who ran in an election, maybe they get extra points for that. I don't know. But I don't think we should just give it to the next person blanket like that. We need to go through a, a scoring process, see what's the talent is out there. We get stuck, we get so stuck in stuff. We need to open up the pool, people out there that want to apply. We don't know what's going on, so let's see what's going on by opening up the process, get applications, and talk to some folks, and then move this thing forward. I don't, I'm not interested. Something, yeah, simple, but we talking about appointment to city council. We're talking an appointment to city council. So I don't think it should, I think it should be some more thought and given into that process, and it's just too many talented people out there who would love to just have a chance at it. And give them extra points on the scoring system if they ran before. Give them some extra points, something like that, but I think we should open it up.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I agree with Bill, I think it should be the next in line. We can reach out to that person and say, you're the next in line, we are going to appoint you, and they can, if they don't want it, they say, no, you just go to the next one. This whole scoring thing, you know, going through all this, the, the person running who's the next in line, put themselves out there, and they, many of them got a lot of votes. They should be able, you know, to be the next in line. I did call around to cities around here, and one of them, Westland, is changing it to the next in line, because they went for six and a half months with two council people positions they couldn't fill because the council couldn't agree.
Through the chair?
No, go ahead, no, Ms.
Again, I'm just for the record, I think we should go with the scoring process, open it up to the talent, the pool of people that we have in our city, and go from there.
I'm going to bring some opinion up. Chief of Staff, you want to say something?
I apologize, Mayor Ryan, but I'm, first of all, I pray we never have to have a council.
And we can't hear you.
I pray we never have to have a council again. What we've been through in the last couple of years has been really tough. However, as a resident and as voter, the residents spoke in two thousand and twenty-one, we voted seven people in. We didn't vote any, nine, ten, eleven. We voted seven people. I don't see what the harm is if we do a scoring system and anybody that wants to apply can apply, whether they were the number eight vote getter, the number fifteen vote getter, or a resident who moved in three years ago, because we don't know when this... Because we don't know when this, God forbid, could happen again. I mean, respectfully, who were picked up were appointed at this time, and I was mentioning, somebody that was already looking to run for another office. And he did come in and served. And it's like, this fault, he had upper aspirations, right? And by the same thing, he could play somebody with health conditions that wouldn't number eight vote getter. So as elected officials, it's in this charter for you guys to make a policy. And I think that we have to count on our elected officials to make the right decision and not a buddy system. If you come up with a format and a scoring system, and sure, maybe you give that number eight or nine vote getter a little extra option, but respectfully, just because they bought signs and went out and campaigned, the residents spoke. To me, that's almost an automatic, they were selected by the residents. The charter selects you to make that next election. So that's just my two cents. I'm gonna go to the gallery and sit down now. But again, please, let's just all put together here just so we can never have voters again.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Okay, we go by next one down. And like she said, the people had voted on the seven. But if you go by that scoring system, when you total your scores up, we're not gonna be talking about, well, that's not, that totally eliminates the buddy buddy plan, the scoring system. Because in, in your scoring, in the individual scoring, when we make those, when we do the scoring and when we total them up, our scoring gonna be totally different. So I don't see where that's gonna be, the scoring system would be a fault, a flaw in making that decision because it won't be a favoritism decision because all the scoring gonna be individual. We gonna have seven different people scoring, or six gonna be scoring. And just because I might give one person a two, you might give him a five. And when you total up, them scores gonna be different. And whoever had the highest score, that's, that's the way it go. So what, that's, to me, I'm, I'm kinda more partial to the scoring system because, uh, it comes out the favoritism. You know, the buddy buddy plan. But you know, my, I don't wanna, my buddy out there, even though we got, we know we have some friends out there that wanna be, but just 'cause they wanna be don't mean they should be. You know, I wanna be a, I wanna be a great brain surgeon, but I shouldn't, but I ain't got no business being there.
Now working on my brain.
You know, but you know, it's something to consider 'cause right now is the time for us to throw all possible ideas up and where we can make a decision. I mean, even though we're saying, well, if we don't make it tonight, at least we gotta start the process in our mind and we can think about it. Because when you're doing a major thing like this, a lot of times, once do you leave here, you're gonna come up with ideas and questions that you didn't think of right then.
Mr. Wilder.
I guess my question would be, who's gonna do the scoring? And how are we gonna do the scoring? I mean, are they gonna sit in front of us and we're gonna ask questions? Or they're gonna turn something in? I mean, uh, we're gonna leave for tonight and not selling this problem again.
How you want.
I mean, who's gonna score and how are they gonna score? All we're saying, let's, let's use this system. You know, we, we can take care of our friends with the scoring system too. I mean, there's no, you know.
Ms. Roscoe.
It'll be different, it'll be different outside for the chair. It won't be like you have a ballot and you're voting for him and you're just the same thing, three times the same thing. Everybody, as was mentioned, is gonna, you're gonna score that candidate based off, and Steve has really put together a nice chart here. Um, and, and the scores are either gonna be the same or different. So you've got seven people with different scoring. So, um, I, I, I wanna just reference is that the city of Taylor right now, they still have a vacancy, it's going on a year. And they're, they cannot decide on a person. It's three to three right now, it's three to three. The other night, last week, on their, their, um, council meeting, some of them got up and walked out and they lost a quorum in the middle of a meeting. So the thing of it is, they can't come to an agreement. And I think it's, not to be redundant, you know, redundant here, but I think this scoring system, it's fair, it's impartial. You're going on the qualifications of those, whether it is the next person in line, whatever. If they've shown interest and you've got candidates out here, you can ask the questions, score them fairly. Um, and then you're, you're gonna get a score. The person with the highest score, then you all vote on it and vote them, you know, vote that person. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Roscoe.
So was it the scoring system, like Bill said, you can just, um, you know, score your friend all, all tens or what have you? But is that actually doing us any justice as a council? You know, I mean, unfortunately, I, I know people may do that. But to me, it, it'd be like, um, I'm gonna score them on, on their qualifications, not because, you know, uh, they come over and help me cut my grass, uh, type thing. And, um, but on the other hand, I think if we go on the scoring system, it's not like they should just answer questions. I think we should see them face to face and have them verbally answer the questions for us. Because then, then you know them questions and them answers are coming from them. And, and you get more of a vibe when you see somebody face to face, whether you know them or whether you don't know them or whether you've known them forever. But the other thing I wanna say is, right now, we just say, we have to fill this within forty-five days. Um, and one of the most, an important thing I think we need to clarify in an ordinance is to, okay, vacancy is vacant on the first. And, and so, um, you know, you've gotta put it out there that we have a vacancy. Um, we, we need a day plan, you know, by the seventh, whatever. Interviews are gonna be on this day, this day, this day, by, by whoever submits. And that's a cutoff, that's it. So we have time for the interview process if we're gonna do it that way. Instead of, you know, two days before. And then we also have time to take care of that. And you know, because if you have fifteen people apply, it's only fair to give fifteen people a chance at an interview. So we have to have time for that interview process and, uh, and go, and go from there. But we have to have, um, we have to have our time limits stipulated in that ordinance.
Ms. Taylor.
So, um, again, sometimes on city council, we gotta do some work. Sometimes, this is something that's been put in that place, it's in the charter, that we have to make a decision. Sometimes we gotta put some work in it. And so I think it's in our package. They got a template in our package, last meeting, a scoring system that worked. It worked. We just go in here and take this template and tweak it. We just tweak it and keep it moving and not get stuck in what we, stuck. We just stuck. Scoring system, I don't care if somebody do tend for somebody else. Like David Jones said, everybody's scores is gonna be different and the number's gonna be different in the end. Whether somebody gave all their buddy all tens, somebody else, in the end, the score is gonna be all different. We just need to move forward and stop getting stuck and do something different around here and put some work in. We need to put the work in on this one. This is the first time I think I've been on council where we actually need to put some work in on something. Let's put the work in and do it.
Mr. Chair, I also wanna say, it was that, um, you know, we had people who were actually on the ballot too that submitted letters of interest. And it was so sad that they filed and they weren't heard. Like you all didn't even know everybody who filed. You know, the, every, all three times. So, 'cause we, we never got to that point to let you know, hey, we have three, and there were, I think, two people from the ballot that actually, I, I know Mr. Crowe every time. He, he, he submitted a letter of interest. But you didn't even know that because we bypassed. So I just think that, you know, it puts the clerk's office in a very odd position. Here we are, now what do we do? And we're waiting on you all to direct us, to tell us what to do. Not me tell you what to do, but for you to direct us. So whatever you decide, I will say this, Councilmentally has, has referred to the scoring system. This time with the, um, street sign, it made all the sense in the world. We met, we went through the application. This year, we just only had two. But we, I, I know our Chief of Staff sits on that, that, that committee as well. We all sat, we, uh, and our City Attorney, we scored it out. We had our discussion about it, we scored it out. And then we, and you saw the scores. We provided it for you, it's very transparent. Um, and we presented it to you in order for you all to, um, you know, to, to, you know, to vote. So that's all, just to kinda say, it did make the process so much easier than to have you twelve applications and things.
Mr. Wilder.
It appears that the, uh, that the next one up isn't gonna fly. So write something out and bring us back to it so we can get behind this and move on.
No, you all decide and then we write it. I'm not gonna write it and give it to you 'cause I've tried that, it doesn't work. You all decide what you wanna do, you tell us.
Can we get something to get from?
This was, what you have is what was suggested, what was the opinion from our City Attorneys. Each time we presented something and suggestions and boy, I, you know, you guys were, you know, I felt like I was, you know, target thing here. But so, from the, with all due respect, that's why this meeting is, is for you all. You make the decision on how you, how you want to proceed moving forward. Then you guys vote on it and then it comes back to us and then we will implement what you decide. It's really not up to, it doesn't matter to me, it's what you decide.
What we can do is, um, like you said, tweak it, the attorney get back involved and then come back next and go over, you know, make a decision.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you, one way you could do it would be to appoint a committee of no more than three so it doesn't have to be open session, who could meet with myself and the clerk to try to develop something that could be brought back.
Who would point that committee? Who will? I would point that committee.
You would point that committee as the chairperson, yes.
Okay, okay, all right. I won't be on it. I would, uh, do I have to do it now or later?
No, you don't have to do it at the moment.
Okay, I would, uh, point three. Okay, sounds good.
So what are you gonna do? You're gonna wait?
One another time.
I'm trying to, can't follow you here. You're gonna, you're gonna appoint Mr. Chair of Committee?
Yeah, I'm gonna point three.
Three? And then we'll, um, how, how will you go about that? By a, an email or notifying them or talking to them? And then letting us know who's on that, how, who's on the committee? And then the City Attorney and I?
I'm gonna pick, uh, three, I'm gonna pick one that's for one situation and another for other situations, so it'll balance out instead of all three for one person, uh, one, uh.
Diverse. One to the diverse.
Okay.
And then you're gonna be on there 'cause you didn't have an opinion?
Right, I'm, I'm not gonna be on there 'cause, uh, I'll, I'll be on the, on the beach. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that, I didn't mean to say that.
One last comment, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Roscoe.
John, the only thing, Ellen, I would, I would like you to think of when, before you meet with them is, um, and it has nothing to do with questions and all that, but the timeframe that we would need to set in place. 'Cause you, you know better than anything, like, okay, 'cause now we're gonna have to put it out there. How long does it take to put it out there? How, how long should we give somebody to, um, turn in an applicant, you know, turn in a letter of interest? Things, things like that.
Yeah, we, you, you just-
And then-
You tell us, we'll implement it. That's it, that's how I'd like to do it, makes it easier. When you all decide, we'll implement it and then we'll, you know.
Yeah. We'll go get it.
Okay, all right.
And do we have a timeframe as far as when you're gonna, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, appoint your committee?
Uh, about the end of this week, Friday. Is that gonna, you know, if that's too early, I can do it.
No, no, that's fine.
I already got my mind made up anyway.
Is there any more discussion from council?
Any other discussion on council?
I'm sorry, do we have the vote on this some type of way, the process we go forward, or no? Okay.
Okay, no, no comment.
Um, then if there's no further discussion, number four is public comment. If there is anyone in the audience from the public that would like to have remarks, you may do so at this time. After being acknowledged from our chairperson, note that you will have three minutes to speak and your comments should only be related to this subject for this study session. We have one hand, Mr. Chair.
Me, me, me.
Yeah, come aboard.
Good evening, everyone. Um, uh, do I have permission to approach? I wrote down some, we had, uh, this meeting, um, was in, I think it was the twenty-seventh of January. I wrote this up on the twenty-eighth, the next day, and I'd like to give you a copy if you're mind, can I approach? Okay, let me start out by, um, the reason that I believe, and I was, I was listening to Councilman Wilds who were talking about the hostilities that were out here. Why are the city out here? And I got to listen to it. And the appearance was made that it was chaotic. Um, you know, so we have to, we have to look at that 'cause we don't have anything in writing, we didn't have any guidelines. So it appeared as if we were just picking straws and going at it. Um, me personally, I think that the scoring system, I gave it to you like this. I even wrote it down in the days. If somebody passes away, you got a seven to ten day mourning. I mean, I wrote this all down because this is a rocket science. You know, this isn't, it, we, I'm a little frustrated because it's taken eight months to get here. And I'm not a pessimist or anything, but three of you guys have had surgery since the first thing. And it, it is all it would take. And I'm, and believe me, this is a terrible way to look at it. But the job that I've had my whole life, things can change in an instant. And it's all it would take is three of you guys or five of you guys to be in a bus that gets in a wreck. And then we're right back into this. And I am totally against the next in line because if you go next in line, you have to stay next in line. So something happens, somebody leaves, moves out of town, they get replaced. Well, then you start going down the line. And by the time you get down to the fourth person, this is unprecedented that you've had to make this decision four times in a four-year period. But it can happen, it's, it's happening. So you have to, you have to look at it from the point of the fourth person in line that didn't get voted, he didn't get voted for a reason. So do you really want to have them fill in a vacancy? Um, I, you know, I'm a firm believer in this is the way that do it. Um, I think that, you know, I agree with Mr. Jones that if, we just kinda dropped the ball because it was new. And when the clerk said how it was gonna go, you know, and I, and I, I was disappointed too 'cause I was thinking, well, you know, we'd go one more. And then it was like, and I didn't realize until I started hearing the people talking that the chaos went to, you know, we don't know what we're doing. So I don't want that anymore. But I'm a, I'm a firm believer in this point system because if you come up and you look at the guidelines of the time, I mean, it gives you ample time to fill these positions. And you can go through any application. It gives you time for an application, gives you time for interviews. And then you come in and you vote on a, a point system and you're done. And it's there and it's in writing where people can look at. So you're not gonna get people, you're gonna get people that are mad at you anyway. You know, we don't have, you know, we don't have Starbucks, you know, that's your guys' fault, you know that. So people are going to be, people are going to be on you anyway, but if we got something in writing that you can show them, it's like, we did this. Now at the bottom, I put, whatever decision is made should be sent to the residents for charter. I, I sat on the charter commission and that, that brings up a whole different thing. I think that if you come up with a policy, it should go to ordinance because down the road you might find something that we didn't think of.
Okay, Mr. Will, hi, we have a, this is good, what we could do, like, you can, we can correlate this with this rules here, so that's some good input too, so we appreciate that, so that way just give us some more ideas of how to.
John, just a quick comment. I will not go on any bus ride with any of you folks.
Right, right, okay.
So don't, don't be getting no bus to put me on.
Right, right.
No, Mark will throw you underneath the box.
Right.
But I just want to say that, don't, don't make it too hard.
Right.
Thank Clark.
If, if there's no other comments, Madam.
Takes us to adjournment.
Court moved.
Support.
There's been motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Tallick?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved, and a, I didn't even look at the notes. Oh, and I'm leaving too, isn't that something?
He finally got it down pat.
Right, finally got it, last minute, yeah.
Our 6:45 study session is now 6:55, but we can move right into our next study session and this is to discuss the quarterly investment report. Mr. Chair, roll call has already been taken and we do have a forum for this special meeting. The special meeting agenda reads as follows, number one, roll call, two, agenda, three, discussion, quarterly investment report, four is public comment, five is adjournment, and a motion would be in order to accept this special meeting agenda to discuss the quarterly investment report.
So moved.
Clark?
The motion by Mr. Kraut, supported by Ms. Abdo, for most, for the study session agenda is presented. Excuse me, Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tallick?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
I guess we will have and we would like to welcome back our city treasurer and we'll open up the discussion, we'll let her open up our discussion.
Thank you very much and good evening, good to see everybody. This evening we are doing our quarterly report and we have Gray Luffley with us and she's going to do the presentation from PFM. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you, nice to see everyone tonight. I'm going to be going through what's been happening in the markets and the economy recently that I'll also be going over, first quarter, so quarter ended March 31st results. We will have June 30th results shortly and those will be also shared with you as well and I will try to keep you abreast of what's been happening more recently, so this isn't so far back. As always, if you have questions, feel free to interject as we're going along or you can wait until the end, that's fine too, whatever you would prefer. So the theme tonight and for the first quarter and the second quarter has really been uncertainty, uncertainty in the markets, uncertainty about the economy, a lot of that having to do with and stemming from what's happening with tariffs and therefore what's going to happen with inflation. So there's been some question as to whether or not these tariffs that are going to be implemented or are currently being implemented will be inflationary, some people think it's going to be a one-time inflation hit, other prognosticators out there think it's going to be a continual inflation hit. The reason that that matters is because the Federal Reserve is determining whether or not they should raise or lower rates based on where inflation is as well as where the unemployment rate is. And so right now, with some inflation being a little bit higher than that 2% target, the Fed is unsure as to which way to go, which way forward. So they currently are keeping rates high, expectations are that they're going to start lowering them and we'll get into that in a little bit. I'm going to skip over some of these slides and get to the ones that I think are most pertinent for you, but if you have any questions on the other slides, feel free to, to ask. On this slide here, we talk about the tariffs, the effective tariff rate, so this goes back to 1905 and you can see that tariffs basically for the past 100 years have basically been around that 2%, 3%, 5% range and on an overall effective rate. When we did have liberation day on 4/1, so April 1st, and then subsequently we've had some tariffs being rolled back and other tariffs being implemented, where we are right now is not that 20% or 22% that's shown on that page, but rather closer to an effective tariff rate of about 15%. So that includes a base tariff rate of 10% on all imports coming into the United States, but then takes into account the tariffs that we're seeing on Mexican goods, on imports coming in from China that are at 30% right now, although some of that has been potentially delayed a little bit further as you saw the news today. All of this to say that the tariff rate is much higher than it's been for quite some time. There are different impacts that we expect are going to happen as a result of that, one of them is potential inflation. So if we're seeing prices rise here in the U.S. because of tariffs coming in and those imports that you and I are buying costing more money, we're expecting that that would raise prices overall. And so at some point we expect the consumer will be hit in some way, we just don't know what, to what extent. And because of the fact that a lot of this seems to be part of the political way of, you know, trying to make deals and things, we, we expect that there could, that, that's a question right now, is how much is going to actually be rolled into the consumer. There is an economic impact, if you see the tariff go up, to a certain extent tariff rates go up, that could be not beneficial to GDP. So for instance, last quarter you saw our overall economy actually decrease by 0.5% of a, of a contraction. This past quarter though, we did see a flip-flop of that 3% increase in the GDP. So we're in this place where we're kind of, you know, whipsawing between pieces of information. Revenues, on the other hand, we did see revenues for June come in at $25 billion, $27 billion in terms of tariff revenue. So that, some of that revenue can really offset any tax cuts that, or tax increases that would potentially need to happen, et cetera. And then consumer spending, the question is, how much will this affect a consumer as we move forward? So if prices are higher, is that going to impact you in me going out and actually spending money? I talked a little bit about GDP, so I'm going to skip this page, but I'm going to turn to this page, which is the Fed's dual mandate. So as I mentioned before, the Fed has two things that it's most focused on, first is price stability in terms of inflation, they don't want inflation to be too high or too low and so their preferred target for inflation right now is 2%, an average of 2%. They also are focused on full employment, so making sure that the American people have as many jobs as potentially they can, which means that the economy would be continuing to be growing at a, at a good clip. So currently, we have continued to see inflation be above that 2% target, I think I've spoken about this before, but if you call back in January, June of 2022, inflation hit over 9% on a year-over-year basis at that time. It has since come down, you can see that coming down on the chart on the left-hand side here. Currently where we stand with overall inflation, we're going to get new numbers tomorrow, but currently we stand at 2.7% on a year-over-year basis for inflation, so prices are rising 2.7% versus where they were last year. So that doesn't sound terrible, but again, it's still above that 2% target that the Fed has. If you take out the volatile components that include food and energy, we're actually around 3%, about 2.9%. So again, all of those things taken together, we have seen a lot of improvement in inflation, but we're still not back to where the Fed wants us to be. On the right-hand side, I'm showing the unemployment rate and of course you can see it ends of the March 25 and we're quite, quite removed from March of 25, so just to give you an update, we have seen unemployment basically move sideways over the past many months. So we've seen it bounce around between 4.2%, 4%, 4.1%, most recently rising again to 4.2% a week and a half ago at the most recent jobs report on that Friday. That report was actually quite abysmal, so did want to touch on that for a moment. Part of the reason behind that was not just jobs added and where the unemployment rate went, which is again kind of sideways, but rather because we saw reductions in the previous two numbers for jobs. So think of May jobs and June jobs coming in, those were reduced by 250,000, which means that we saw a huge reduction. You may have seen news that President Trump fired the Bureau of Labor Statistics Commissioner as a result of that report and as a result of spurious data. That is expected to, we're, we're not sure what that's expected to do yet, the market hasn't really kind of digested that as of yet, it's going to be interesting to see how that goes as we continue forward. One of the reasons that the data is so difficult to interpret, I guess, or oftentimes is revised, is because of the fact that what, the way that they find out how many jobs have been added on a month-over-month basis is by doing a survey. So they just reach out to companies and say, how many people did you add in terms of jobs? How many jobs you had recreated? And obviously during summer months, that can be a little bit more difficult to do, right, when you can't get a hold of people, et cetera. All of that to say, because we saw the unemployment rate stay at that 4.2%, but we saw job creation come down, the expectation now is that the Fed is going to certainly cut rates at the September meeting. If they cut rates at the September meeting, expectation is that they will cut as well as in October and then potentially in December as well. The reason this matters for you is because you have a lot of money in fixed income and bonds and those bonds are being affected by what's happening with the Fed. The Fed is, is anchoring the overnight rates and where you have cash invested and other things like that, then when you further out the curve in that one to five-year space, which is where we're investing on your behalf, this is all, it all comes together. And so what you have seen recently, and I'll get to this, I'll show you on this page, here on this page, this is old, but to give you a sense as to where rates are right now, we're continuing to see rates lower than where they were even in March. The solid blue line there is where rates were in March. What this means for you is that your investment portfolio however, did see quite an increase in market value during the, during this quarter, also during this past quarter, which I don't have here for you, but at, ended June 30th because rates have continued to fall. And as rates continue to fall, that's beneficial for market values and fixed income and so we have continued to see strong performance in the portfolio. So hopefully that, that's positive for you all and you're excited to see some of those numbers. I'm going to skip over all of these charts and get to this right here to talk about what factors to consider for the next six to 12 months are. I've talked about a lot of this, but at this point we expect rates to come down, we expect the labor market to continue to cool to a certain extent, I know there's been a lot of anecdotal discussions about people losing jobs or being laid off and not being able to find work easily, that seems to potentially be coming to fruition in the, in the actual hard and fast data. Inflation again remains the uncertain factor, so when I talk about uncertainty, that's really the question is, are we going to see inflation tomorrow when you open the newspaper online? Are you going to see that inflation has continued to come down or are you going to see inflation stay a little bit stickier? Finally, consumer spending is the last thing I'd like to discuss briefly. So when we think about the U.S. economy, the backbone of the U.S. economy is you and me going out and spending money. And so if you and I aren't feeling confident enough to go spend money, that's not good for the economy. So right now, that's something we need to continue to watch as we see how some of this can happen. Any questions on the markets or the economy before I go into the portfolio section?
Any comment, discussion? Go ahead.
So going into the portfolio, here's a consolidated summary, this is just of the portion that we manage, so you can see for, for entirety of the city, it's 36.6 million as of March 31st, well diversified in all the sectors that are permitted by your policy and by state code, Public Act 20. The maturity distribution at the bottom, you may recall that not too long ago, we did change the strategy slightly, so instead of it being a zero-three-year strategy, we're now in a zero-five-year strategy, meaning that we were able to lock in some of those yields that were really attractive in that four to five-year space on behalf of the city to ensure more interest earnings as, as time moves on. This page shows maturity distribution, very similar to what it showed you on the previous page. This is the portfolio composition and includes not only what we are managing, but also outside balances as well. So there are some, some funds that are being managed by another investment advisor, there are some funds in other local government investment pools as well and you can see all of that right here, again, very well diversified. And then this is the same thing, but showing instead of month or quarter over quarter, this is showing year over year, so from 2024, March to 2025, March, you can see the difference between those two years, going from $79.7 million in overall assets to $85.2 million as of the end of March. This page gives you the same information, but just breaks it down by credit quality. One thing I do want to mention here, you may have seen in May, that Moody's Rating Agency did downgrade the U.S. government to AA1 from AAA. So when you see this report moving forward, you're going to see even more AA1 potentially coming in than AAA because of that rating change. This was not a big deal in the markets because this has happened with two of the other major national rating organizations already. So Fitch and S&amp;P had already downgraded the U.S. government. So again, from a, from a market standpoint, this was not a huge deal, this was expected and it was finally kind of just the culmination of, of what was, was expected to happen.
Mr. Chair? Why was we downgraded? I mean, specific.
Yeah, great question. So it's basically as a result of the U.S. debt and the U.S. deficit. The fact that we continue to issue debt through treasuries and other types of debt instruments and we are not bringing in nearly as much money as we are actually extending in and borrowing. So as a result, again, in 2011, S&amp;P downgraded the U.S. government for the same reason, in 2023, Fitch downgraded the U.S. government, so this is again, just the third one finally kind of doing the same thing and agreeing that this is a problem.
This is, what was the timeframe for these, what was the timeframe for all these downgrades? The time between each one?
So the first one is in 2011, so then 12 years later was the second one, that was by Fitch, and then the third one was just in May, so two years later.
2011 and then the one in the middle, I'm sorry, Mr.
2023.
2023, okay.
And then 2025.
Got it, thank you.
Yes. And really again, it's just an agreement that everyone is saying, hey, this is a problem and at some point, if something catastrophic were to happen to the U.S. government, it would be very difficult to pay everyone back, right, all at the same time if there was some sort of, you know, catastrophe that occurred. All that to say, that we continue to see the U.S. government debt as the safest, the strongest, the best that's available in the world. It's kind of amusing too, honestly, because we're seeing some companies, not very many, but some companies are still AAA rated, whereas the U.S. government is now not. So Microsoft, according to Moody's, is now a better credit than the U.S. government, which seems silly if you think about that. If something were to happen to the U.S. government, obviously Microsoft and all these other AAA rated companies would also be in a whirl of error.
Yeah, thank you.
So moving into the portfolio section that we, we manage ourselves here at PFM Asset Management, it's 36.6 million as I mentioned, well diversified in that sector allocation at the top, that's showing all the different colors of the different sectors that we're invested in, you'll see that gray portion is the largest, those are the U.S. treasuries that we were discussing. The next largest section is agency commercial mortgage-backed securities. So think of agencies like Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, those types of agencies that are implicitly guaranteed by the U.S. government and also highly rated as well. The next section is yellow and that's commercial paper, so this is short-term credit, short-term corporate debt. Again, very highly rated, has to be highly rated, also matures within nine months as per Public Act 20 and also three-year investment policy, that's what's permitted. And again, we are looking on, at all of these things on a regular basis and monitoring that credit. You can see the credit quality in the bottom left-hand corner and the duration distribution on the right-hand side here. One thing I do want to note on this page, this shows over time, basically the same thing, what has the sector allocation looked like, but also gives you numbers in terms of what the percentages in the portfolio have been as well. And what I want to point you to is on the right-hand side of the top, from December to March, you can see there is a little bit of a shift in some of the trades that we had done. So in December, you saw about 74% in treasuries, that top line, that went down to 71% in March. Where did that go? That went into all these blue bars here that are shown. So we did repurchase some other treasuries, but we also purchased some of these other sectors and I think this is one of the places that was really able to add value to the portfolio over the course. We purchased those agency commercial mortgage-backed securities that I was just mentioning, but we also purchased more commercial paper. That commercial paper typically has higher yields than what you can get on just a treasury or a vanilla agency. Same thing with those commercial mortgage-backed securities, again, backed, backed by those agencies, they usually have a higher spread or more value than, to the portfolio than what you can purchase if you were just purchasing some treasuries. So adding those to the portfolio, again, the first-hand treasuries, so adding those to the portfolio, again, for the quarter, was really beneficial for return, and we expect to continue to keep those types of securities in the portfolio moving forward, here's the return information, so if you look for the past three months, the blue, uh, bars are the portfolio that we were managing, the gray bars are the benchmark, the benchmark is the zero-to-five treasury, as I mentioned, so we are managing in line with the benchmark, but of, of course, we have all of those different levers to pull in terms of what sectors can we purchase as well, and you can see that for the quarter, we returned, we see, you see the blue bar is larger than the gray bar, um, by quite a bit, actually, the portfolio returned to one-seventy-nine versus the benchmark of a one-forty-three, so that's thirty-six basis points about performance, um, if you look over the past ten years, you can see that, that, while it's not as large, um, overall, it's not nearly as large as the one-year number, um, we're still outperforming the benchmark quite handily by twenty basis points on average, on an annual average basis, just for this past three months, uh, you see interest earned at three-hundred-and-four-thousand, so those are dividends and coupons coming in from the securities you already own, and then the change in market value is based on the fact that yields fell, as I mentioned, when yields fall, that's beneficial for fixed income portfolios, and so total dollar return for the quarter was six-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars, over the past year, just shy of two million dollars, in total, in terms of total dollar return, very strong returns there, um, last, uh, slide for me, did wanna show you what this looks like in terms of accrual basis earnings, so we talk about, um, you know, total dollar returns from a total return perspective, but here you can see interest earned, again, three-hundred-and-four-thousand, um, change in amortized costs, so that means that your, uh, securities are appreciating in value over time, as those appreciate, you're seeing total monetary earnings of three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, again, over the past year, about one-point-five-million, and over the past ten years, we look all the way on the right-hand side, four-point-six-million in terms of total, um, accrual basis earnings over that period of time, so, we're excited about those results, um, again, when we look at this upcoming quarter's results from, uh, the second quarter, you're going to see similar story happening there, because we continue to see rates fall, again, that's gonna be beneficial for the portfolio market value, and so we expect that to be strong as well, and we wanna talk to you next time.
Thank you.
Any questions for me, anything I can help answer?
Any comments from the councils? I just got one more question. Going back to the downgrade, I know you're saying that, I just wanna understand, so when we say the, did the revenue stay flat or the same, and we just increased debt, or what, what is?
Well, so, so what's been going on here, actually, I think I have a slide on the deficit, let me go to it, you might help to have a visual.
Okay, and can you tell me what page you're flipping to?
Yes, uh, well, I don't have page numbers, that's not how I'll tell.
Oh, okay.
Um, I'm showing you the trade balance, which is a part of the deficit, so on the left-hand side, we have, this page has trade balance and GDP on the right-hand side, um, but essentially, what's happened is we continue to have revenues grow, right, we get tax re, tax revenue in, we get, again, now tariff revenue, all these other pieces of revenue coming in from the, for, um, for the U.S. government, but we continue to issue a lot of debt, so when we're issuing all of these treasuries, we're issuing massive sizes, massive amounts of treasuries to fund the borrowing that needs to be done, in order to allow the U.S. government to continue its operations, so part of the reason, and I do have a slide that I unfortunately did not include on this, um, is, you know, if you've heard about the big beautiful bill, the reconciliation bill that was done recently, uh, part of what was done was putting some cuts to some of the different programs that were expected to, uh, to be, to, to add to the deficit, to add to that debt that we have, and with that, we're, they're expecting, the Trump administration is expecting, and, um, you know, overall, we're expecting that hopefully, over time, we will see less of a deficit, less debt, but if we keep at the run rate where we are right now, we're gonna continue to get revenues here, but our debt is going to continue to exceed those revenues.
John?
Thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Comments?
Nope, just keep making the money.
Um, next on the agenda is public comment, and this is the portion of the agenda, for those, uh, members of the public who would like to have a comment, um, on, um, the quarterly investment report, uh, to do so, raise your hand, and after being acknowledged by our chairperson, approach the podium, you will have three minutes to speak.
Any, any comments from the public? No comments, Madam Clerk?
All right, number five is adjournment.
So move.
Support.
The motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo for adjournment, Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned, regular meeting starts at seven-thirty, thank you.